Good evening, everyone. This is the Parsonsville Planning Board, and we'll call this session to order at this time on December the 15th at exactly 6:00 PM, looks like. So we hit this one right on the nail on the head, and we'll get started on our agenda. So we can see if we can get through this here in an orderly fashion tonight. But first off, I want to let everybody know we're real happy to see Andy Yale back with us. He's missed a few meetings, and it's... I'm just gonna say the word "few." And we're so happy to have him back at the...
Speak precisely.
Okay, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Mr. Yale. So I wanted to point that out.
Thank you, thank you.
You're so welcome. We call the meeting to order now, and we go down to item number two is correspondence. Correspondence for the board. Everyone should have copies of everything that we receive, such as letter of decision to Michael Hasty that before he made a decision on his application. You find that in your package. I hope that you have it. It's dated November the 18th. Notice the decision and finding the fact. Nobody... I know I got mine. You got yours? The notice of decision and finding the fact, the letter to Michael Hasty. I have mine signed by... Desiree signed it for me. Rest of them say they don't have it.
Oh, give me 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay. We'll give you whatever time you need, young lady.
All right. Do you have everything else, or do you need something else?
Well, there's a... Let me ask if they got the rest of them, too. And then the second correspondence is notice... Meeting notification to the Bolton and Selkirk. Gailey Selkirk and Mark Bolton. That's another notice of receipt of application. You guys have that one? They say they don't have that one either. I got mine. And then the next one is notification to Michael Bolton and Selkirk abutters list of abutters. You got that one? Notice of abutters. Here, I've got it. I got a list of abutters. Anybody got that one? What about you, Aaron?
Negative.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet? If you opened it up... You just got the letter, notice to abutters? You don't have that one either. Everybody's got theirs over here on this side.
It's in the pocket, right?
I picked mine up yesterday. There was very little in that one. Sixty-five sheets.
And then the last thing is 2022 meeting dates. Has anybody seen this besides me? She made them out for the whole year. So you've got a whole bunch of correspondence to give for the board members, young lady.
I'm working on it.
You're working on it? So I don't want to get too far ahead till they get that, and they might have some questions. We'll take a quick, a quiet little pause.
Papers, I have some.
You guys have... You said you had some of it?
Yeah.
You had some of it?
I got the letters.
Letter or in the list, too? You didn't have the letter, the copy? Okay, okay. Yeah, you're supposed to have all of it. Everybody does. See, I thought we was gonna be running through here tonight real smoothly, and then we were hit a snag.
That's nothing. If we don't end up with a headache or a heart attack, I'm happy. That's a nice place. Pervy. Pervy Place.
Yeah, those are detailed, and they're large, and easy to read, and the dimensions are all on them. So if anybody needs to see them besides me, look themselves.
Sorry, I opened it up. Oh, thank you, Santa here today.
I gotta try to get this down, so I don't do that again.
I don't know. You shut mine right off. At least I don't know how to turn it down. Like, turn it off, that's good enough.
All right, go. Get it for us now.
There's no signature from... We're waiting on this for Jesse Ray's signature.
Jesse's already got the answer from his signature. He's gonna hear notice right here if you read this. For local... See, it's checked here. It's also checked here. Local puma inspector approval.
Yeah, but she's not signing it.
No, he has not signed it yet. But he's approval for it. He won't sign this unless we approve the plan.
But what about the applicant?
Applicant's supposed to sign it. I missed that one. So you can help. We get to that, just make sure you go through all that.
I said have my packet still at house in the cabin.
And the date. They're supposed to sign it. Jesse's got all the information. These drawings back here explain it in enough detail that I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, no, I went to those.
The only thing that I don't like is we don't have a site plan to scale. Is that what that is? No, this is the actual building.
Just the building.
All the details for the building.
I just saw one to scale. Did Desiree bring up one?
Measure all of the...
No, those are in our package. She brought us something else. I don't see it right now.
Site plan to scale.
Yep, the site plan. One that she brought us to swallow up. There, I see it, Aaron's got it. That's the one she just brought, I think.
And that's just more where the driveways are located.
Yeah, the driveways and all that. And that's what we need. See, he's here, this is his house, this is his driveway. This is some trees. These are all racked for the scale up here. Where they're all at, there's only one road. There's nobody roads. Let me drive ways, one, two, three, four, five, six.
This makes sense. Tear it down and build that, right?
Yes, yes. And increase it a little bit.
One's big, twice shy.
Yeah, this is the one I have to do now. This was under the application. But maybe we have more packets. David got mine.
Who got yours?
David, and he was on the phone, so maybe he just didn't grab all his stuff.
Yeah, he's... He's not the best in the world. I'll just get this.
No, he's in the mood. Like, all the other day, I'm like, hey, how are you? And he goes, busy, what do you want? Well, a little more play than three would start.
I don't feel nervous if I have to.
Yeah, I brought a bunch of books over. And they didn't want to take them. I'm like, goddamn it, you're taking them. Put them under your free hat tree.
Well, you could've given them out there to that storage on 25. They're taking them.
I heard that yesterday.
Yeah, a big sign after, toys on top.
We wanted to make sure they stayed in local.
That one makes sure. I don't... I'll read you there.
I do like her twist on the new application.
Yeah.
I think it's perfect.
How late did you give me a reservation for the 25th? How late you guys gonna be opening?
For New Year's?
Yeah.
The first?
The 31st, that night.
Oh, you said the 27th. I'm sorry, Eve, Christmas.
So we get there 6:30.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, doing great.
We gotta make sure you guys got all the data, too. I got my package, but everybody else gotta have theirs.
We'll take you over.
No. You still need to have the documents.
I know, he was looking at the little diagram. The one they did on the square paper. I like this one, I can see it.
There's quite a few of them in there. He's got quite a few of them drawn.
Gives us a better idea. Definitely want to do a site one.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, we're gonna do one. Okay, we'll get to that. Here she comes.
She comes over and throws them in.
I reprinted everything for everybody. With also the abutters notices for...
Are you Steve?
Can somebody get an extra one?
What's this called, Rodney? You got Rodney's here, too.
The receipt of application, the abutter letter, and the abutters.
She gave us more than what she has on the list. I told you guys now. Everything is now extra. Yep, because Rodney's... Barrett's is on there, too, now. She added that one.
I don't know. I don't know, but there might be something in there that you didn't count in when you had it.
Okay. Well, we'll take the pause off of the function of the planning board and put it back in motion at this time. Of all that correspondence, and I need to give you guys a couple minutes to kind of look it over. Does anybody have any questions over any of it at all? Any questions over what she just gave you? Take your time, look it over. It's pretty self-explanatory. Most all of it is. But first time you've seen it, sometimes it's concerning.
I have a question, this Barrett. Richard Janks still your landlord?
For 24, yeah.
Great, I was gonna say, in fact, she got why he's on here. He's still on that building.
No, Richard is not the landlord for 20 Federal Road.
Okay, but he's the abutter based on all...
He is, yes, yes, yes. He's an abutter. Sorry, I thought she was asking who is the landlord. So we have to write that down. But he's the landlord also. Are you confused? Like, there's two buildings now.
I was talking about, I remember the last, the last.
Yeah, but he was talking like he was...
There's two buildings. There's the old Chinese restaurant and the old blue building. Or green. So we're talking about the green one.
We are, yes. But Richard abuts me.
Yes.
To answer his questions.
Okay, that's all right. Okay. All right. Any thoughts from any other questions? Andy brought one up. Okay. If there's no other questions over the correspondence, we'll move on. Actually, happened to think of one, and we need to go back real quickly, board. We can do that. That's our prerogative. So we call the order correspondence. Item number three, review of minutes for November the 18th. I want you to see, and look at your minutes. Up the top block, the heading. What does it say there? It says the 17th. But it's really the what, the 18th?
No, it's the 17th.
It's the 17th. So what's...
I had the same meeting on the 18th.
Okay, so what's wrong on the agenda is the dates on the agenda.
The date on the agenda is wrong, the date on the minutes is correct.
Okay. Would you look those minutes over and see if anybody's... Aaron, did you find anything when you looked it over? You're pretty good about that.
I didn't when I first looked it over, but I did just notice it says Tuesday instead of Wednesday. So yes, I did find one thing.
Wednesday? So we need to have that changed to Wednesday? Okay. Those are guests that were in present, who was absent. Correspondence. Look down through their review of minutes for October the 20th. Old business, there was none. New business subdivision review for Michael Hasty, now RO8 lot 006, landlord. And that's the lengthy one that we had a long discussion about, if you remember. Division of the 47 acres.
It wasn't really a subdivision.
It was not a subdivision. No, you're right. They didn't, they were not asking for a subdivision divide. They were just asking for a separation of lots for sale. That's all that was for in reality. So Andy, that's gonna be, made it a little confusing to you. You need to read that.
I understand it. They didn't really even have to come before the board.
No, they didn't really have to. You're right. Thank goodness, that's great. It's something we... They didn't have, and we didn't have to make a...
I heard it from Rodney.
We didn't even really have to make a decision, in reality.
Yeah, it was confusing.
It was confusing. And then there's an open to public for questions. For who was here that night. Scheduled workshop for Wednesday, December the 1st. And we did have the workshop. And then we adjourned at 7:10 PM on the 17th. Any other questions or any corrections to be made to the minutes, please?
Just the header.
None?
Moved to accept the meeting minutes with the one change in the header.
For November the 17th?
No. To change it from Tuesday to Wednesday.
Wednesday. For November the 17th minutes, that's what I was saying. You need to add that in there.
He did.
He did? Okay, I didn't hear him. Okay, Wednesday, November the 17th. Is there a second? Second by saving. All in favor of the minutes as amended, please raise your right hand. Unanimous? Okay. Now then, we'll get down to number four is old business. At this time, we have nothing on the agenda for old business. New business. Item number five. First item, A, site plan review for Michael Bolton applicant. Gailey Selkirk owner of 55 road between the ponds amount, U-11 lot 007, private residence. Huh? Mark Bolton?
Yeah.
I was thinking somebody else. I'm sorry, Mark. The package is in front of you.
This is not where we come, this is...
Okay, me, too. You read it correctly.
I was gonna say.
Straight face.
Please look the package over.
There you go.
He submitted the package. There's a lot of information in here, and... You can see what they're trying to do. And that last drawing that Desiree just gave us shows all the driveways and everything. Let's see if you got it or not. She brought it up here, it's a hand-drawn one, that one. I can't find mine. Did you grab mine, Roger?
I did not, but couldn't borrow this one.
That's okay, I can look it up. You got, give me a copy, please. Thank you. So this is one of the things that we did ask for from our last meeting, and we thought we needed to have. It shows all the roads and the abutting roads or intersections. There's only one in that area, only one road. And we asked for the driveways. He's listed all the driveways here for us and how many feet they are from his driveway. If you look at the top, it's got a little key up there to use, and the driveways are all listed how far they are apart from his. His house, his driveway. And I guess that other little square off the side must be where the existing septic system is. Because it's got to be moved anyway. If there's any questions over that. Now then, if you go back through the package, the way our package is laid out, application package, you gotta go down through here and make sure everything that's pertinent to this request is in the package. And I don't know if it is or not, so we need to go through every bit of this.
I got an initial question. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, sir.
It's just a kind of, how many Gaileys are involved here? It looks like there's three. McGregor, who looks like she's deceased. Then there's a Selkirk, and then there's a Lockwood. Selkirk and Lockwood the same person?
Correct, sir, yeah.
Okay, because it's listed differently in two different places.
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. McGregor is who they inherited from?
Correct, she's deceased, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Now then, I'll have to ask Desiree this. Did we get nine copies of the original of this application as filled out?
Yes.
We did get nine copies.
Actually, I think we got 11.
We got, well, and then I'm going down to item number two. 10 copies of site plan drawn at scale. Did we get that? Not really. To allow review of list of approved approval criteria and showing the following, all A, B, right on down through on a drawing. Did we get that?
He's got a drawing here.
He's got a drawing, doesn't show everything. It's listed here, though, is what I'm asking. I want the board to say, yep, everything's on there. That's not the one I was looking at.
It's in a different package.
It's in the, it's in the package for the replacement, the septic system.
Yeah, but it's not the scale of...
Yeah. Someone's drawn that to scale there. What my question was, if you look at item property of Gilbert and Doris Lander, is this...
That's drawn to scale, left corner.
Yeah, that's just drawn to scale up there. One inch equals 20 feet. It shows all the property lines. If you get to that item number two here, if you find that one. Yeah, show Andy that one we're looking at. And it shows where there's a, maybe a couple, an extra set of pins, because there's a little piece of property, really, that's all part of this lot. Am I right, Jesse? Did I read that right from when you went and looked at it? Okay. So it's got it up to scale, it's got all the lot lines drawn out. It shows the driveway, and it shows how much frontage is out there. Did you guys see all that? Okay. Address of all property owners within 500 feet of edge of property. Did he, is that in here? That would be the abutters list that they call in the abutters list that came off of. It's not really, it's just where there is a property. It's not really in the abutters list, per se. And what we mean by that, we discussed recently, Andy, is this is called, someone's listed here for this property. They may not be the actual property owner, and they may be somewhere else. And we're having trouble with it. Desiree trying to get all that information correct, so she gets all the abutters listed, the abutter letters out to the appropriate people. So what was happening is they're turning this list out of the book, and it's not helping us out. Am I right saying that right, Desiree?
Yeah, the abutters listing that was submitted was the locations and the...
Locations only.
Locations and the... What I mean for the abutters is the mailing address.
Right, that.
Correct. In general, when people submit, they submit the mailing address of the person owns the property, not the property.
Right. So it's causing this problem, and she's had to do quite a bit of extra research so we get the letter out to the actual and not through the abutters.
It's a matter of record on town. The town has this stuff on record, right? So applicants could go to the town.
They can find it, yes, they can. It's just not being submitted correctly here recently. That's what we're saying. Okay? Because when she does, she showed me what she had to do and go back, and it was almost 80% of the work she had to do to make sure the actual abutter got the letter.
We talked about this in the past, but I think it was a function of, it's not having a secretary at the time, was it the applicant had to send out?
The applicant's supposed to do it by this. By this.
Yeah, so we should enforce that?
Yeah, we're gonna have to enforce it. Not in this case, but we've got this changed to where it's gonna be enforced in the future. We're changing this for... We're gonna discuss that tonight, too. Okay? All right, now then. Boundaries of all properties under control of the owner. There's only one deed to the property that's in the package. Name, registration number, and seal of the surveying company, architect or engineer. All we have here is an architect, company, and a seal for the actual house itself. We do have that. Okay? Existing conditions bearing, and this is all property lines to be developed. That's not necessary, because he's not developing the property. The property boundaries are staying just exactly the same. So that one, there could be listed as NA, should be listed as NA, and you give us a reason why it's not NA, or why it is NA. In the future, we've got it laid out where they have to do that. So you'll hear about that more later tonight, Andy. Location, size of existing sewer, water mains, and culverts for drainage. We do have that on this drawing here. Drawing number two, it shows a culvert going across the street. Name and location. Location, name, and present width of existing streets and right-of-ways. He gonna give the width on it or the name of it? I'm being picky, guys, because I want to make sure we get, this is done right. Yeah, width, just like it says on here, and name of that road or right-of-way. Streets and right-of-ways of them are adjacent to the proposed... It's not a proposed development, he's just working on his property. But we still want the width of that road and the name of that road. So that's still gotta be done, yeah.
But isn't this the name of it, road between the ponds?
Well, maybe on a different one? Not on this one. You got one there? The one sheet he just gave us. Okay. But where's the, there's no width on it, though. He didn't put his dimensions on here. There's no dimensions at all.
You following this, Ms. Bolton?
I believe he needs to widthen the road.
Yes, yes, sir, yes. You can just add it right on this drawing you gave us recently. We're not trying to make it difficult, we just want to make sure we're right.
Some 2G, I believe.
Yeah, it's 2G. No, I'm, 2H. 2H, so. 2I is non-applicable. You're not doing anything well. The drawing we have, this drawing shows everything.
The smaller one, in the package.
Yes, we have that one, yes. And there's a smaller set of drawings in your package, Andy, so you'll know. It goes along with these big ones, I just asked for. There's a set back in your package someplace. They're in your package, near the back, I think. The house and everything. Yes, there it is. Location, dimensions of existing driveways, parking and loading. Well, these other driveways, you put no dimensions on them. You've got them listed, which is great. How wide are they? Are they 10 feet, are they 15 feet?
I think it's somewhere somewhere.
Okay. Now, I'm going to the back here, let's go over to the back part. Location of intersecting roads is none. Location of open drainage courses, what, I don't see of any. M. There's no signs. N. There's no existing easements. There's any... He didn't tell us there was any deed restrictions or easements. He should've told us no restrictions and no easements. He didn't do that. And from there, you really stop proposed development activity. You're not developing, this is not a subdivision you're developing. We stop it in when you just have an application like this. Am I right, Jesse, or do we think we should go on some of these? If you look down through them. There's no dimensions of proposed driveways, nothing, provisions for water supply, no. Proposed surface water drainage, it's already there.
They're not proposing.
They're not proposing anything, so we could stop it in for just a regular application. Okay?
On N, that's on West Pond, is that right? Is there a community association there, or do they have covenants? I know there's one on Long Pond.
West Pond does have an association, but there's no dues on it.
So there's no covenants or anything like that?
No covenants, yeah. We haven't heard of any covenants or anything. You have any covenants out there on West Pond? That you know of?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, let's go through the rest of the, kind of glance through the package, and everything else, I think we got, and he knows what we still need now. And a lot of that could be added right here, huh? We need to go, yeah. It has nothing to do with us, but I want to bring it up. Subsurface wastewater disposal system variance request, it's in your package, guys. It's really nothing to do with us, other than the local authority, who's the L P I, who's the C E O, will not approve this or allow it to happen unless us as a board approve the application. If we don't approve the application, there's no need for him to do it. So, until we get what we're asking for still, we don't have a complete application. So it's gonna hold off, hold it off for another month. But during the meantime, board members, while we're waiting for this, the definite, additional information we're asking for, does, uh. Does the board want, do you guys want to go ahead and make a, uh. Site, a site visit? Make a scheduled site visit in the public hearing? We can do that tonight, we can set that up.
Yeah.
And not wait, so we don't have to wait till the next meeting, make it go back another month.
Right.
So if we want to set up a slight visit tonight, at a public hearing, if it's the board's pleasure, someone would make a motion for that, I think we should do it.
Hey, let's look at the dates first.
Huh?
Let's look at the dates first.
Okay.
Please. I gotta, I gotta check, um, your weekly shopping guide, make sure I can get an add-in for this week.
It's gotta be far enough out to give you time to do it, yes. Next week's not a good week, I said it's Christmas week, really. Don't tell me. I'm gonna get yours, but I don't have mine out. The date's the sixteenth?
Yeah, we're sticking to Saturdays, if we don't do it this Saturday, we get two holidays.
We can't do it, we can't do it the twenty-fifth. We can't do it the first.
I mean, I don't have time to get a notice out.
We don't have enough time to get our notice out. So it's gonna have to be the first Saturday, second Saturday in January. The eighth. It's probably gonna have to be the eighth. Eighth of January.
Fifteenth, yeah.
We would, our next meeting is gonna be right around then.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, all right, we got enough time then.
Yeah.
Would the eighth work?
The eighth or the fifteenth, either day.
Would that give you enough time to get all the information out?
I have to have an add-in for Monday to actually have anything in the shopping guide before the holidays, because they're, they're closing down for the holidays, so I will have an add-in for Mon, before Monday.
Okay.
Make sure it's in next week's shopping guide.
Okay.
Does the public hearing and the sidewalk have to be advertised for two weeks prior?
Yes.
Is it only a one-week thing?
No, it's two weeks.
Seven to ten days.
Seven to ten.
Yeah, so, but because of the shopping guide being closed.
It's gonna take an additional week.
Right, so, so if I get an add-in for the twenty seconds, then there's the eighth for mine. If, um, the next.
But the public hearing, we're not gonna have till the night of our meeting anyway. That gives her enough time to get that in.
Right.
Yeah, so the, I don't know when their next issue is after that, I would assume it wouldn't be probably until the fifth, which would mean you'd have to push that, so if you wanted to be able to put an add-in this week.
I move to have a site plan walk, a site walk for this proposal on Fifty-Five Road Between the Ponds on January eighth.
What time?
About one o'clock P M.
Board members, other board members, any conflict, can everybody make it? January the eighth at one o'clock, do we have a second?
Near second.
I'm waiting for a second. Saban seconds it? All in favor for that site walk, please show hands, your right hand? All unanimous? So January the eighth. At. One P M, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Now then, public hearing for this property also, for the, uh.
I move to have a public hearing on January nineteenth.
Yes, sir.
At six P M.
Do I have a second for that?
Second, man.
Andy seconds it, all in favor, show your right hand? Unanimous. Public hearing for Fifty-Five Road Between the Ponds, January the nineteenth, which is, is that an hour? Nineteenth? Yep. It's my birthday, geez, I ain't gonna be here. January nineteenth at six P M. I might not be here, you might have to do it. Okay.
Are you gonna discuss this case at all this time, or you wanna wait?
I wanna wait to get all the information.
All right.
What do you think? Get your opinion.
It's all right, I just see a couple of issues that I know are gonna come up, but they can wait.
Yeah. If you want to bring them up tonight, we can go ahead and discuss this more.
People think about, um.
Yeah.
Is this considered, he's using the existing footprint, but is it new construction? Because if it's new construction, then, and this thing is eleven feet from the water, we may have to look at a different setback for that and push the house back, depending on what the shoreline.
Well, it's where it's at, Jesse, you looked into that, and what did you tell me?
I don't, you're gonna get the list.
Yes. My cause is existing, it's grandfathered in, is my opinion, I made the house.
It's grandfathered in, but he's gonna take that house down and put a new one in.
Yes.
So that is, that's, that's what the question is for me.
Okay.
Is it a new house, or is it an existing house, and are there two sets of, you know, regulations based on which one it is? That's all, I'm not, I don't have an opinion, I just got a question.
Okay. Well, he can look for, you said you had a bill and you thought to make a second question?
Oh, I think that's it, that's the primary law.
Okay. My cause is that their, their foundation is, is falling out from under the house.
Oh.
That's the reason for this, and since they're gonna have to redo it, they wanted to increase it by thirty percent.
That's all right.
Which is by law, they can do that.
They can do that.
Because we've already looked at that, so they cannot be any closer, frontage wise, in my opinion, it has to stay at least towards that now and go away from the pond. At least, that's the minimum they can do. I'll have that.
You already have that?
Yes. But.
I think I made copies of that.
Yeah, you made copies, and I don't know if everybody got a copy, or I got a copy. Now then, where does it say, is this?
So this is height, the structure, this is setback.
Setback.
From the water.
Yeah.
No expansions unless principal structure entire within twenty-five feet, then eight hundred square feet or thirty percent.
Right, but that's as close as they could be.
accessory structure, yeah. Anything within the thirty feet.
Yeah. See, they're at only eleven feet.
Right.
They're only eleven feet setback.
That's what I'm talking about.
Anything within thirty feet. Well, twenty-five feet, anything within twenty-five feet. Eight hundred square feet or thirty percent, no accessory structure expansion.
There's no accessory to it?
No.
I know, we, everybody needs, I happen to have a copy of this, so, all you guys should have this, because this is for the great pond. It's also for, each one's listed. What they're saying here is, no expansion, he's talking about the expansion of the house itself. On this principal structure entirely within twenty-five feet of the, of the, uh, maximum height of the high water, then eight hundred square feet or thirty percent can be done. No accessory structure expansion, if there's anything else they want to do other than the house, they can't do it. So everybody needs a copy of this. You will give that, see if Desiree will give us a copy for it, I have a copy. This, this is right here, Andy, so you can look at yourself to the bottom on the front page, till you get your copy. Because it fits within the twenty-five foot, see it over on the right, the twenty-five foot? Anything within twenty-five feet of the water's edge. Which if they are, they're at eleven feet.
I think the sidewalk would be beneficial to.
Yeah, it will be, it's gonna tell us a lot.
We're, bring that with you too.
Well, everybody needs to bring theirs with them.
Actually see, see it right on that plan.
Yeah. Okay, anything else anybody want to bring up at this time on this application? Mr. Bolton, you know what else we need? We brought it up tonight. Make sure you get to the C E O, please.
Absolutely.
And then we'll see you, uh, on January eighth for the site walk at one o'clock. And then, uh, on the nineteenth, and I think that we approve the nineteenth also, we'll have a public hearing on the, uh, property at six P M before we start our regular meeting. Okay? So that one's out of the way for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Barry.
Who's John Barry?
So it's, this is the application, it's Rodney Barry.
Same, the same? You're sending?
We are the same.
Okay.
Yeah, we are husbands.
We are husbands? Well, when we start to look at this, right off the bat, your application's not complete. You just heard us talk to him. You gotta go over this outline of site plan content.
Yeah.
And you gotta give us answers for everything on there, down through N. And if it doesn't apply, you don't think it applies, you need to put in a non-applicable, and tell us why it does not apply. I know that you're, you're not changing the building, I know that. As far as the building structure.
Yeah.
You, probably not your site either, we don't have any site drawings. We need a drawing of the site, see, I just laid out. There's a lot in here that needs to be brought forward to us.
This isn't, like, this is what, so, I, I need to know exactly what you're looking at, I guess.
Okay, thirty-six.
Do we go through it step by step?
Yes, we can do it for her too. Okay.
I, I know that your name is Andy, I'm trying to translate, but since last time I was here, there's not one person that was on here.
I'm the last one.
Decent.
Yeah, you are, you were.
I'm on the head for a reason.
Yeah. What's your name?
Roger.
Roger?
Roger.
Decent, last of all.
I think I got you, and what's your name?
Alan.
Alan. And I got Aaron and.
Saban.
Saban.
Yep.
S A V O N.
Hi, Anne.
Thank you.
Andy, may I ask you to go through this this time, I went through the license, would you take?
What's your name?
You want me to? Sure, if you don't mind, you don't want to, okay. I don't mind asking sometimes.
That's all right.
Okay. We need, uh, I'll ask Desiree, Desiree, did you get nine copies of the site plan application?
Yes.
But did you get ten copies of site plan drawing to scale to allow a review of appropriate criteria?
It's all in the same one, Desiree.
Yes, whatever was the type that I gave you.
Oh, okay. So all we have then.
There is a drawing.
It's just one drawing here. Dimensions of the building. It's twenty-five feet, how wide is that building? One square feet equals two feet? Okay.
It's about forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet across the front. Thirty-six, six. Is there any property in the back, or there's, there's not hardly any on the side of that building?
I didn't hear you, Alan.
Is there any property between that building and the building next to it?
No.
You need to just put that on here and show us what the space is, is it yours, or is it, uh, the adjoining buildings?
It's, it's mine.
Well, we need to know that, please. And what about the back of the building, you didn't show us if there's any property in the back either?
It's the mill, isn't it?
The, so.
I know the mill's back there, yes.
Yes, it's just the mill, other than my playground that's attached to the green building.
Okay, but how much property in the back belongs to you?
My playground.
Well, there's nothing over here tells me that.
Got you.
Okay?
Yep.
Does she put, need to put in driveways and stuff like that as well?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's any driveways, there's any driveways to get back there?
There's not driveways, it's just, uh, the four parking spots out front.
Out front's what I thought.
In the immediate of that building, and we also have access to the municipal parking across the street.
But how do you get to the back of your building?
I walk through my pickup.
But if you had to get a vehicle back there, how do you get it back there?
You don't.
You don't?
There's no, there's no, there's no access to the back.
Okay, you, put that down there somehow, no access to the back of the building by vehicle, vehicle or truck. Okay, next is, um, boundaries of all contiguous properties, you need to show the other properties too, that's next to you.
Because you rent the one next to you as well, right?
I do.
She rented the one. Yeah, you need to show that, because it's a contiguous, it's a continuation of property under your.
Right. Copy of the deed, did she put a deed in there?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I didn't look. I'll take a hit for that.
Well, I thought a deed, but the letter of establishment.
Well, we need a deed, she's not buying the.
I don't know if the building. I have permission from the landlord to do the building, right?
But it's, it's, we still need to see it.
I think it's other documentation, is where they're at.
Okay.
It's the documentation of interest, yeah.
Okay.
That's what the letter.
Right, title of interest, okay, all right, okay, I got it.
Can I pull my other file from the drawer? Because it's all over there.
Okay. Well, you just have to see Desiree eventually about that. Not necessarily tonight. You don't have an engineer or site surveyor?
No.
Existing condition, bearing a distance of all property lines to, they're not developing, so F you don't have to answer, you can put down N A. Location, size of existing sewer, water mains, culverts and drains?
N A.
Well, you didn't, I'm sure that building's got a sewer in it. Do you have a sewer in that, location inside that building someplace?
Um, that is undetermined information. It's not because of me, but it's always been undetermined since I've had that building as a.
How do you get water to drain out of that building, where's it go?
I don't own this building, Alan.
I understand that.
Like, it's, I don't, I don't know, it, there, it's, it's undetermined by the town.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, Desiree. Along with the mill sewer, and the bank building sewer, and everybody else's sewer, it's undetermined by the town, that, that information is.
If you have a drain in the floor someplace, or a drain that goes through the floor, just show that in your drawing. Just say a drain, water, water drain or something like that, if you put that on your drawing that you've got for us.
I do not.
Do you have a toilet?
You have a toilet?
What?
You have a toilet in there?
Yes.
Just my toilet.
Just my toilet.
I'm at, I don't consider it a great.
From the, from the water company?
Why, and, and, yes.
So it's not the.
Put that in as, as you.
Yes, that's what we're asking for. Name, location, present width of existing streets and right of ways. Okay, you need, well, you got federal out front by.
Stay on the front.
Yeah, federal road, do you have a width on it?
Forty-five feet.
Where's it say that?
Right here on this.
Oh, I see it now, yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it's the frontage, not the width.
Right, that's the frontage, the width of the road is sixty-six, I think.
Whatever you need to.
I know it's thirty-five from the middle of the road to my front.
So it's times two in reality.
Seventy.
Yes, you need to put that on your drawing, please. The location, dimension of existing driveway, street, parking, you need to show us your parking spaces.
Okay.
Looks like you're drawing a little map of downtown.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah? Go ahead. Location of intersecting roads within two hundred feet of the site. There is a road down there, Elm Street intersects down around the corner.
I think it's further than two hundred feet, though.
Huh?
I think it's further than two hundred feet.
Boy, it's gonna be, it's really close. Just.
The one that goes by the gas station will be.
And the one going there by the gas station across the street is definitely less than two hundred feet. Absolutely. I, I drive by there all the time. Location of drink, wetlands, no, I, L is, no, we don't need nothing there. No signs, M you don't need nothing, N.
Are you doing a sign?
They have a sign.
Are you doing a sign for your business?
There's currently a sign there already.
Okay. Can you just sketch it out of the picture for us? Just sketch it out of.
Just sketch it out.
I could put a new sign.
We may, but if it's the same, it doesn't...
Put that on your drawing. Location, dimensions of any existing easements, 10 copies. If there's any covenants or deed restrictions, boy, that could very possibly be, be down there. Wow. You don't know of any, do you?
I rented this building for a month, this is my fifth year, Alan.
Okay.
Um, I do have documentation from Mr. Gilpatrick, but I'm not sure that that's in there.
What's that?
The, the information on the building that he gave me five years ago. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But he gave it to me, it's here.
Okay, all right. And proposed development activity, I don't think you need to do O through Y, because you're not changing anything outside at all.
Correct.
But your change of use, we're gonna have to really look close at that.
All right, let's look.
Not tonight.
All right.
We gotta get a complete package first.
All right.
Yeah, we need a complete package before we do anything. Anybody else got anything to bring up about this application at all? Anything from any board member, please?
I think you got it all.
Hmm?
You got it all.
All right, so just to, I'm sure what we need, uh, I need to write on this map that there's no access to the back.
Right.
Any particular traffic.
Right.
Need dimensions for the site out front.
Yep.
A picture of my toilet.
Yep.
Drawing the space.
Drawing.
We just need a small little skin, your sketch of your office.
Just add it in your sketch.
Right. Okay.
And mark your spaces out front. You tell us what they're gonna be, what's the width on them?
The what?
The width of your parking spaces.
Yeah.
Okay. And what your property is in between the building and, that's all part of this.
Uh-huh.
How much property do you have from the edge of the building, say, much to the next building?
NA.
It's not much, and I know that. On both sides, yes.
Okay, so...
Then intersecting roads.
Intersecting roads, don't forget that. Within 200 feet or less, I'm within 200 feet.
Within 200 feet?
Yes, please.
Okay. So in all reality, the only thing I don't have is the 200 feet.
Okay.
Because everything else I have is right here.
You think you got everything else?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we will, this, we will, does anybody want to, Andy, you got anything else, sir?
I just want to take a quick look at something.
What you got for Andy? I'm ready.
What's, what's, do you know your square footage or your sales area?
Yes, I do. Uh, that would be...
We'll, we'll get it.
No, this is just a heads up to you guys, based on that, to determine how many parking spots you need. And it looks a little tight to me there, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it does.
So, no, check that out, so you'll know.
Right.
Okay, you need...
So what do I need?
For every 150 feet of, of, um, square feet, 150 square feet of retail space, you need one car, parking.
So 150, 300, 450.
So you've got four spots at 600 feet.
At 600 square feet.
But does the municipal lot?
It's not that big.
That's true, and then, yeah, you got the municipal lot.
Guys, they also have access to the municipal lot.
I want to mark to make sure this guy, the dimensions are marked.
Me, I can't.
That's right.
Alan, she also has access to the municipal lot across the street.
Yeah, well, that's not nothing to do. It's gotta be there.
I'm just looking, I mean, you guys, you don't get the deed, you know.
But there's supposed to be four parking spaces in front of her building.
Right. But that would be not, those couldn't be often adjusted her building, Mr. Patrick.
But I would think they would be, but what I'm saying is, and she can use it across the street, I know that, too.
Right.
But the way the books are written, for every 100 feet to square feet, you have to have a parking spot assigned to that building. That's what Andy's saying, he's right.
Oh, I agree with Andy, I'm just wondering why municipal lot wouldn't have.
So if there's 600 square feet, her building's, you know how many square feet your building is roughly?
900.
So how big is your office space gonna be?
So I have a small side, which I'm thinking is not more than the 300, so I'm not thinking that our retail space will be more than the 6.
Okay. We'll have to look at that closely whenever you bring it forward.
Like I said, we'll measure it.
Okay.
But I mean, even with that, you know, talking about Alan, and talking about parking, I mean, I needed one space per, like, four families for my daycare. The spaces across the street were qualified as parking, as well as my four spaces, the municipal parking across the street with the crosswalk.